Hey, everybody.
Lauren.
Good evening, Commissioner. All right, it's seven o'clock and I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Clerk, can you take the role?
Commissioner Simon.
Hi, I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Gillis.
Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Ronan.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan.
Commissioner Tollis.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Alsager is absent. Vice Mayor Frischbacher.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the state of Michigan.
Mayor Joseph.
I'm in the city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the state of Michigan. Do you have a quorum? Tonight, we do have a presentation, an update from Jim McBride of Middle Michigan Development Corporation, or MMDC, and Erin, do we have a presentation, or is Jim with us?
Let me see, I'm not seeing him on the, oh, you know what, he might be on the attendees list.
I don't see him.
I don't see him on the attendees list either. He did send ahead some materials for your review, and he was going to do a presentation here. So I hope everything is well, but I do not see Jim McBride in the attendees list, unfortunately.
Well, I think if Mr. McBride does join us later, we can come back to that. And so we'll move on from here, from here. His presentation materials that he gave you, are those pronounced, or?
There should be within your packets a report from Mr. McBride. It would say the Middle Michigan Development Corporation, two thousand and twenty-one quarter three report, which had some just general company visits, information, grant information, project highlight information, and just the general handout from the MMDC as well. But as you said, if Mr. McBride is able to join us this evening, perhaps the commission could shift over to his presentation. If not, if there's any questions, comments, concerns based on the information in your commission packets, I'd be happy to forward those questions, comments, or concerns on to Mr. McBride.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? I don't see any hands up, and so at this time, we'll open up public input on agenda items, and this is the time for the public to comment on things that are on the agenda tonight. Do ask that you state your name and your address for the record, and if you're with us by Zoom, you can go to the bottom of your screen and hit the raise hand button, or if you're with us by telephone, you can hit star nine. It does look like we have Comarch Harris. Who has, has his hand up in the attendee section?
We're promoting him to the panelists. There we go.
Thank you, Marion.
You say it again, please.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Hi, you're with us.
How you doing today?
Good.
Okay, I got a quick couple of minutes. Well, my name is Comarch Harris. I'm from Lansing, but I'm living in Mount Pleasant now. So my idea, what I like to bring into Isabella is a program, a boxing fitness program. I'm sorry, boxing fitness program for the youth to help anti-bullying, child obesity education, kid drug free. So I just like to know, what is my next steps? What can I do? Can I get the help to, um, to push my agenda? Because I talked to the owner today. He told me he gave me as a community. He thought we were going to turn it into a community center for the youth in Mount Pleasant after school. So I'm trying to ask who can help me or direct me to what I can do to make it happen. So I don't know what else to say. You hear me?
Yep, yeah, we can hear you. Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I got a, I got, I got an award from the World Boxing Council, from the Pope, and I got an award from the mayor, Andy Shore and Virge Venera Woodmore, for doing what I've been doing in the community. I'm the first guy to do boxing in the community centers in Michigan and the school districts, because I'm a retired professional boxer. But I got bullied, I picked on, dyslexic, so I want to bring it up pretty much more pleasant for the support from the community and see what can I do to go on to the next step for two thousand and twenty-two.
All right.
And that's all I got.
All right. Well, I thank you very much, and I know that there are some resources out there for, for community organizations and stuff like that, and maybe we can follow up with you after this meeting.
Okay, I think, I think I have my, I think one of the ladies got my information. She came to my gym and I talked to her, so I think she got my information and my website. And y'all can go on, it's L S Y O dot org. They tell you everything about me, retired pro boxer, and what I do in the community. I'm just trying to get the help. And I'd like to say thank you all for giving me the three, four minutes to talk to what I like to do. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your willingness to serve the community.
Thank you. Sweet.
I don't see any other hands up in the attendee section. Erin, did we have any emailed comments to the commission on agenda items?
I was checking. No, we don't.
Okay. All right, well, this time I'll close the public input on agenda items for the evening, and we'll move on to receipt of petitions and communications.
So this evening, the city commission has five items on this part of the agenda. This includes the city manager's report on pending items, monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, resignation of Candace Johnson from the historic district commission, notice of temporary traffic control order number one dash two zero two two. This includes placing metered parking signs on the south side of Bello Street for all on-street angled parking spaces between Lansing Street and East Campus Drive, and converts reverse angled parking spaces to front-end angled parking spaces. This is a notice of this traffic control order. Approval would be set for January if the city commission wishes to move forward with that.
Thank you, Erin, and I'd just like us to note that Commissioner Alsager has joined us. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar this evening? I don't see any hands up, and so Erin, if you'd like to run us through the consent calendar this evening.
Gladly. We're recommending the final items for your approval, the following items for your approval this evening. That's the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Tollis?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, please.
And Commissioner Gillis?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any discussion? Commissioner Tollis, I see your hand is up.
I'm sorry, Laura.
It's okay. All right. I think at this time, we can go to a roll call vote to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I please ask first for Commissioner Alsager to state her location for the minutes.
Thank you. City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, state of Michigan.
Thank you. And now roll call on consent calendar. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Tollis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Tonight, we do have two public hearings. The first is our public hearing on the proposed two thousand and twenty-two annual operating budget. And before I open up the public hearing, Erin, did you have any comments you'd like to give?
I can just go ahead and tee this one up. So the public hearing for the annual operating budget, the city commissioner is required to hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of the annual budget per city charter, following the presentation of the budget that took place on October eleventh. After this evening's public hearing, the city commission will hold a work session on the proposed budget at the conclusion of this regular meeting this evening. The proposed budget is a balanced budget, meaning all revenues and fund balance use exceeds total liabilities. The budget projects twenty-two million in total governmental activities, one and a half million in capital expenses and debt service, and thirty million in proprietary funds, but nineteen of that coming from major improvements to the water resource recovery facility.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing, and if you're with us by Zoom, you can go to the bottom of your screen and hit the raise hand button. And if you're with us by telephone, you can hit star nine. Did we have any emailed comments about the operating budget?
No, we did not.
Thank you. I don't see any hands up in the attendee section, so I will now close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to our second public hearing of the evening, which is item number eight, which is on the special assessment district number two dash twenty-one, and to consider approval of resolution number five and approval, consider approval resolution number five for the role and setting of payment terms for special assessment district number two dash twenty-one. Erin, did you have any comments before I opened up the public hearing?
Similarly, I could just provide a little background on this one. The city commission will need to hold the public hearing tonight of proposed special assessment role per ordinance, chapter thirty-three, section twenty-seven. The role was presented to the city commission at our October twenty-fifth meeting. We are asking that the city commission then consider adoption of resolution five, which will concern, confirm the special assessment role.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll open up the public hearing at this time, and if you're with us by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're with us by telephone, you can hit star nine on your telephone. Do we have any emailed comments about the special assessment district?
No, we did not.
Thank you, Marion. I don't see any hands up in the attendee section at this time, and so I will close the public hearing and open up the floor for discussion and motions. Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
I move that we that we support the special assessment and set it for approval, that we approve it.
And Commissioner Alsager?
Sorry, I will second that motion.
I just want to make sure with staff that that motion fits what we need, because I know we're specifically approving resolution number five, and if that needs to be part of the motion or not.
I believe if we could amend the motion to include that language, as you indicated, Mayor, that the motion is to adopt resolution number five.
Okay, so I would offer a friendly amendment just to include that the passage of this motion is to pass resolution number five.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second by Vice Mayor Frischbacher. Any discussion on the friendly amendment? All right. I just want to make sure, do we have to vote on the friendly amendment? Because it doesn't actually change the meaning of the motion correctly by definition.
You do not. As you indicated, a friendly amendment is really more or less just to clarify what we are discussing here, what was within the motion, so we won't have to vote on that, just the main motion itself.
I see that Mike Homier has jumped in.
Yeah, as long as the, the friendly amendment was accepted by the motion maker and the supporter, you're fine.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
As the supporter, if I need to support again, I will support again.
All right. All right. So any, any other discussion on the resolution? All right, well, no hands up. I think it's, we can vote on the motion to approve resolution number five for the special assessment district number two dash twenty-one.
Commissioner Tollis? Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion is carried. So that brings us to item number nine, which is to consider the contract with RISE or Recovery Independent Safety and Empowerment advocacy for mental health services assistance. I know this came up, I believe, I believe it was maybe two meetings ago, but Erin, would you like to give some context before we enter a discussion?
Gladly. So as you indicated, Mayor, this contract had come up to the city commission before. On the back end, as we were resolving parts of the contract, we did run into just a couple of things, and so there are a couple of changes since the commission last saw this contract. Couple of sections of contract language were amended based on some input from the city commission. Also, the city became aware of an eight percent administrative fee from RISE. Staff also wished to make an adjustment to the compensation of the position as well. This resulted in an increase of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars from what was previously approved. So the contract request now totals seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. We do have Director of Public Safety, Paul Area, on the meeting here. Should you have any questions or anything to address with him regarding the details of the contract? Ultimately, staff is still, we still feel very strongly about this program, and so we are seeking your approval tonight for the contract modification.
Thank you, Erin. Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
I move that the commission approve the modified contract as presented.
Commissioner Simon?
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract. Any discussion, questions? I would like to really give a big thanks to Director Loria. I know he worked very hard on this proposal and, you know, did some, some work to make it work with the budget, and, and also I know he gave a lot of credit to Nancy Ridley as helping him with that project while she was working. And so we all know that, you know, everything that comes to us has been a team effort, and so really, the, I really want to thank staff for coming up with this proposal and bringing it to our desk. I think from my impression, the staff is, or the commission is, is very impressed and very happy to see this going forward, and we really hope that it has a very positive impact with the community. Commissioner Tollis?
Yeah, I want to thank Director Loria for working on this, and I think it's way overdue, and I think it's going to be well needed, and it's going to help, help our officers out in the field. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up, and so I think at this time, we can vote to approve the contract with RISE for the mental health services assistance.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tollis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion is carried. That brings us to announcements on city-related issues and new business. I just wanted to remind the public that the availability for flu shots and COVID vaccinations is, is pretty wide open, and if you haven't gotten your booster, or you're still considering getting vaccinated, or if you want to get your flu shot to protect yourself against those sorts of viruses as we get into the winter months and flu season, I think the community would really appreciate you taking those steps to protect, to protect it yourself, your neighbors, and your friends. And, you know, as we get into the colder months, obviously, if, if you can do more to help those who really need help, we're seeing, you know, record-breaking need in communities all across the country, and we're no different here in Mount Pleasant. And so there are several nonprofits who really help with that, our food bank, clothing ink, ICRH. So remember to reach out if you can, if you have time to volunteer or donate your time or, or extricate goods or clothes. There's a lot of people out there who really appreciate it. And I'd also like to just thank our new city manager for running, running his first meeting and being here with us, and we, we like the short agenda, too. Commissioner Alsager?
I'm going to echo what you just said, Will, that I would also like to welcome Erin, and it's good to have you on board.
Commissioner Ronan? George, you're muted.
I'd like to welcome Aaron as well and just comment that it's twenty-four minutes, so I think we should start keeping record of the length of time it takes for commission meetings, because, you know, it's always good to keep breaking records.
All right, well, I don't see any other hands up, and so at this time, I'll close announcements and new business, and we'll open up public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And if you're with us by Zoom, you can hit the star or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, and if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine, and that will do the same. Do we have any emailed comments to the commission?
No, we did not.
I don't see any hands up in the attendee section, so I will close the public comment on non-agenda items or agenda items, and that will bring us to the end of our meeting. We do have a work session scheduled tonight for the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget, and the public is certainly welcome to join us there. We'll take a five-minute recess, so we'll come back about seven-thirty, according to my clock, Looks like we have everybody here, and we'll reconvene here for our work session on the budget. I know that Chris and Mary Ann worked really hard to put this together, and so I'd like to see if maybe they have a couple of comments they'd like to make before, if there's any questions or concerns on the budget that Commissioners have.
I don't have any additional comments. Chris did his presentation, God, it's been a month ago now, hasn't it, Chris? And we would be happy to answer any questions, or if you're wondering any questions, and we want to move on to having it on the next agenda, we can do that also.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Commissioner Alsager?
I'm looking at page Roman numeral three, and just it's listing some of the questions that, you know, were uncertainties when the budget was made, and I think it's good to keep those in mind. You know, as we, as it mentions, spring 2022, when we do get property values finalized, and what impact that might have, and then as well the census numbers and what impact that might have. So just to, you know, continue to pay attention to those items, that's all.
Yeah, I think that played a big role in the budget process this year, is that there's a lot of things out there that are sort of, I'm sure it happens, you know, every year, that there's always something, some things that we can't predict when we draw it up, because as I know, this is a month-long process at the staff level. But certainly, that's the case this year. So there are a lot of different questions, especially, you know, town center, I think, was one of the big items on the Commission's mind that, you know, impacts our plans for next year. I think what also made this budget a little bit different, too, is, you know, normally we have more rate hikes and are bigger moves in the budget than, so I think this budget is more presented as a final project maybe than, than it has been in the past, because it seems like generally, there's, there's more items that the staff is looking for direction on this year than this year compared to, comparatively. Commissioner goes?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff, both Chris and Mary Ann, for all your hard work, and the rest of our staff members that had input. This document isn't made up by one or two people. It's a culmination of a lot of brains on paper, so, and I appreciate that. And I know this isn't part of our budget for this year, just for Commissioners that are going to be serving past this year, that I would love to see in future budgets some discussion for an extra youth service unit officer within our school systems. I think it would be really beneficial. I know as many school buildings that we have, to try to be a presence in every one of those buildings, all the way down to elementary, is almost impossible with the need. So just for future budgets, if it's possible with rescue funds or elsewhere, I think that would be something that might be beneficial to be looked into. And second, in the, not on the budget, but a shout out to our water department, and to see, I don't think there is a problem here, but if there might be extra monies in future budgets for extra lead testing in older homes of the older parts of the city, I know they do a sampling. I think the number was like about 20 people, but to see if their lines that are coming in to service them have any lead leakage, so, but I think that that might be something we might want to expand on in future budgets. More testing.
Jason, did you have any comment on that? I just?
No, that's, that would be a, a good idea, I suppose. I think that number is about right, how many we test, and, and we don't have any issues there. And the Eagles are actually requiring that we do some more verifications of the materials. So that's going to be a pretty big investment that we'll put into the system to, to, you know, verify things.
Thank you. Is the Commission comfortable with sending this budget for the, our next meeting for approval?
Yes, I am.
George?
Yeah, I'm certainly comfortable with that, but but I, to be honest, I hadn't thought about this until Mary brought it to my attention, but do we have any sense when those census numbers are going to? My sense is the census numbers aren't finalized yet, right? Is that correct, or am I mishearing that?
I can speak from my end. To be very honest with you, I don't know. I was looking up on this today, and I know we have this on for a future senior management team meeting, actually later this week. But as of right now, I know any sort of challenges to the census are on a stay until 2022. I have the same concerns, I think, the Commission does, and especially is called out in the city's budget here, and that is the loss in population. Now, what I can share with the City Commission right now as well, too, regarding our budget, is that the Michigan Municipal League is working with the state legislature to try to push some sort of a make-whole policy, in which case they would still make whole regarding revenue sharing, Act 51, et cetera, for the communities that did lose some population. So there's still some other angles that are being worked on through the municipalities on that end. So more to come on that in the future, so it doesn't sound like this is entirely done just yet.
Thank you. I, I'm very comfortable with voting on that.
Thanks, George.
And I would, too, on the census numbers, we have our overall number, but we have not gotten the breakdown of by age group and whatnot. This will give us further ability to analyze the accuracy of the number.
I see Bill, Bill's got his thumb up now. Okay.
Yeah, what, I was going to echo what, what Mary Ann said, which was we'll drill down a bit when we get the final numbers to determine whether or not we need to think about lodging a protest or whatever the, the appropriate next action would be if we really disagree with, you know, how the numbers turn out, or I should say if they're not logically explainable by some things that we see in the data. I think to, to answer the question about when we expect the, the final numbers to come out, we're not sure yet. Hopefully this fall yet, but I am not going to hold my breath. It's really when the government decides to release all of that. So I think we're all waiting in terms of when that'll happen, and we'll certainly take a close look at that when we do get those final numbers.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Well, I guess I'd go back to my question is, are we ready to put this on the, on the agenda for our next meeting? Seen some head nodding, seen a lot of head nodding. Okay, all right, well, that's good. And I guess does staff need anything more from the Commission on that, then?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that, thank you for your support for the budget. We will be changing the resolution that's in the budget document just slightly, and that is because we learned that the American, the ARPA funds, we recognized those as revenue in our budget, and we've been told that we don't recognize those as revenue until we actually spend them. So it's kind of an accounting thing where we'll take them out of the revenue, take them out of the fund balance, and we're going to put them into a deferred revenue account on our balance sheet to, till they're spent. So the beginning balance will change because we recognize those in 2021, and then the revenue will go down for 2022, but the money isn't going away. It's just not going to show in our budget until we're ready to spend those and talk about what uses we want to use those for.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, well, this, I think George is right. This is pretty close to on record, one of our shortest meetings. But Pete?
I just want to make a quick comment. I wanted to thank Mary Ann and Chris for all their work on this budget. And before we let Jason go, I had one question. I wasn't here at the last meeting, and we had the Vector Vac truck that had a repair of 102,700. Did we have something major go wrong with that truck?
Yeah, the main fan basically blew apart on it. And then while they were looking at repairing that, they found a whole lot of other things that really needed to be rehabbed, and so that kind of turned into a pretty much rehab of the whole unit, so that we can make sure that it'll reach its expected lifespan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be.
One other question, Jason, the age of that unit? How old is that unit? Do you know?
2000. Shoot, I don't remember now. It's, I think it's seven years old.
Okay, so it's worth putting the money into it because that's a very expensive unit. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, at the, at the current estimated value of it, we're, we're nowhere near even half, so I think we're good by putting that money into it.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank everybody for a great meeting, and 7:43, so we'll stand adjourned and be safe, and have a good couple of weeks. We'll see you in a little bit.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.